On the requests that we receive from the departments. Before I turn it over, I do want to make sure that I introduce to the board our Assistant Budget Director, Ms. Bernita Campbell, who's been with our team a little less than four months, I believe, I may have that right or wrong, but Bernita's been with our team and has been navigating through this budget process. So this afternoon, Mr. Smith is going to lead us through a couple of slides which you all don't have. We finalized them on yesterday evening, and so we will provide the PowerPoint to the clerk and to the board members so that it'll be available for the public to view after the meeting. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Smith, who will go through a series of slides to talk to you all specifically about where we are, where we're trying to get, and what some of the budget assumptions are in terms of determining what the final budget will be. And then after Mr. Smith's presentation, he'll call up a couple of individuals specifically from our Public Safety Team who will make some presentations to the board. And then if you have questions, if you'll just jot them down, we'll try to answer all of the questions at the end of the presentation. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. David Smith, who is our Financial Services Cluster Leader.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and the Henry County community. As always, I like to begin with a preamble, and so I'll start with that. The Budget Department's primary goal, of course, is to develop, adopt, and then implement a fiscally sound and sustainable plan to accomplish the strategic goals that you, the Board, set for the community. Although the county continues to show steady growth, there remains the critical need to find a balance between preserving essential services for our residents while minimizing any tax increases and continuing strategic initiatives that we've implemented under County Managers' leadership over the past three years. Where we are. Fiscal year 22 general fund requests total $202.9 million. That's an astounding increase of $26.3 million, or approximately 14.9% from an amended fiscal year '21 budget. 5.2 million of these requests are due to incentives that we want to utilize to recruit and retain our employees, and that still leaves $21.2 million that came in as a demand from our departments, which I hope you have the materials in your book for operating expenditures for the department requests. So that's where we are. That increase results primarily from departmental operating costs. Forty-six percent of those requests are coming from public safety challenges, and I do mean that because they have some challenges both from an operating and a capital spend. And so representatives from Public Safety are here today to present their requests. There are several initiatives that we've implemented during the past few fiscal years, including but not limited to personnel salary enhancements, addressing recruitment and retention, and incentives for retaining our public safety crew, and this year in January of 2022, of course, a fourth judgeship. Mr. Harold Cooper, our Human Resources Director, will be here to discuss those. I'll return after their presentations and present a couple of scenarios that I'd like for the Board to consider, along with walking you through your manuals that we presented to you, and then some proposed recommendations. I'd like to start with Chief Amerman from our Public Safety Group.
I guess from Public Safety Group as a whole, you know, recently when the new Chair took over, she asked me to do a manpower study. That was very enlightening. I had done one a few years before where it showed we were 100 officers short. Well, we just did a new one, and now it's showing that we're 135 officers short. We used the Department of Justice standards to figure out that. Yes, there's a lot of math that can go into it, and I can explain it, and I have forwarded the report, but to keep the meeting a little shorter, I won't go into all that. Basically, Henry County is still growing extremely rapid, and we need to keep up with the times. Just since I did this report in February, we also now have a seat at the table where we're doing building and planning, and permits are being issued. Just since that time, the Board, planning and zoning has looked at building at eight new locations, just using that same formula of two officers for every thousand people. We're looking at needing another 25 officers already, and that's just since the beginning of this year. We're going to have to do something to be able to keep us in control so we can keep up with the times. We can't keep building and not supporting our public safety. And just as it goes for me, in the Police Department, that I have all these accurate numbers, everybody else has that, too. Animal control's seen a double increase in the animals that they're taking in. Fire's going to more and more calls. Of course, holding all those lines together is a 911 and emergency management response that has to happen, so we have to increase in all these areas. So that's probably, as you guys see, all these new buildings being built, that should be a key indicator that we're going to have to add to our resources and our public safety to keep all these people safe and us being able to react. The other thing that goes along with that, and I know the Board, and we've tried, and the management team has worked on getting to this point, but that's for keeping up with our outdated equipment. Fire, in particular, is in desperate need of getting new fire trucks. They have apparatus as old as 20 years that's still online that they're expect. We spent a tremendous amount of money just trying to keep these things running. Later during these presentations, we can talk about the fleet management system that they have in place. We just have to make sure we budget correctly to make sure we continue that. But in a nutshell, just for public safety, with the growth of the county, we need to grow our public safety team in the same means.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
I'd like to make a request when a department or liaison comes to see that they let us know what they are referring to, come to their numbers, so that we can follow them as they please.
Yes, ma'am. Sherry? Where's the County Manager? Sherry?
Chair Harrell, can you do me a favor? Meet your line. Thank you. And Commissioner Thomas, could you repeat what you said? We could not hear anything that you said. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a request when someone comes forward to make their presentation, that they give us which tab in our budget book that refers to their presentation and their area so that we can follow along with them as well.
Yes, ma'am, and David will go through that. The department heads actually don't have the tabs in front of them, but David will go through that and make sure that you all know which tab they're referring to, Commissioner.
Thank you. Again, Chair Harrell, are we to hold questions until after all presentations? Are we to ask questions as we go along? What procedure are you requiring us to follow?
Commissioner Thomas, if you have questions now, if you want to go ahead and ask those questions, that would be fine, and we'll be prepared to answer them. I had initially asked the whole questions at the end, but we do have a lot of groups that are speaking, so if we want to go ahead and answer those questions after each presentation, that will be fine.
I don't know exactly which tab. I was looking at some of them in the book for Public Safety. My question refers back to if you've had conversations with Stockbridge, how far along are they in securing their own police department, and what impact would that have on our budget and officers that we are now supporting through the county? Would that reduce some of the needs that this chief has mentioned that he might need? What would that number be reduced to?
So I don't think that it will reduce the number of officers that the chief needs because it is currently based upon our population. If you know, we've had an increase not only in the number of recreational facilities that we've added, but also in the number of housing units that have been added, and specifically multifamily housing units that have been added, in which we're going to have to have manpower for that. To answer the first part of your question, yes, our staff has been in conversation with the city of Stockbridge regarding their desire to create their own police department, which is why our staff has been looking over the last couple of weeks at facilities that we can transition into at such time that Stockbridge retains their facility back. It's my understanding from staff that they are looking to have a police chief named by January 2022. And so what I've advised staff is that we need to go ahead and be ready to relocate, definitely prior to January 2022, but to go ahead and be prepared for that. We do have some interim locations that we're looking at on a temporary basis, but we have not found a permanent location to relocate that precinct that's located off of North Henry Boulevard. I'll ask the chief to come up in case I've misspoken on manpower, but I do believe with or without the city of Stockbridge, his numbers and his requests would remain the same. And he gave me the thumbs up.
So am I to assume that we also have in this budget somewhere numbers to reflect that we need another building as well as also staffing? So are those numbers reflected in this budget now?
No, ma'am. So this is just our operating budget. This is not for capital expenses. This will be operating only. Now, this budget does reflect additional officers that were requested by the police chief. It doesn't request his total number of requests, but it does include adding some additional officers just to operate under our current level of service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Thomas, the next presentation is going to be by Mr. Harold Cooper, the Human Resources Director, where he'll be talking about the initiatives in the Human Resource Department. And feel free to ask questions as we go along, and then I'll be back after the presentations to go through each particular tabs in the book that you're interested in that may pertain to where the increases are that deal with the scenarios that I'll present to you later. Is that okay with you?
Well, I think it just helps so much to be able to follow that tab and those numbers that they may be referring to as they go along, and to have you come back and do it all in summary. That's the reason why I asked the question, if we could just know. He didn't have to explain the tab, but if he could just tell me, we'll talk about Human Resources, that's tab number 25, then I have an idea if he's talking about 1 million, 2 million, whatever it is.
Yes, ma'am. So Mr. Cooper is really just talking about the insurance initiatives and not the budget for... Mr. Cooper?
Good afternoon, Board, Chair, Distinguished Board Members. I want to give you all an overview of where we are currently as it pertains to our benefit renewal process. We did a market data research study with seven insurance carriers: Humana, Allied Health, United Healthcare, Aetna, Anthem, and our two incumbents, Cigna and Kaiser. Based on the market data research, we felt that it would be best to renew contracts with our incumbents, Cigna as well as Kaiser. Here's the reason why. Currently, we have 1,498 employees insured under the Cigna and Kaiser brand. 1,200 are insured under Cigna, 298 are insured under Kaiser. In reference to insurance renewal increases, the insurance renewal increase for Cigna is at 5.76%, which in dollars amount, that is $1.4 million. In reference to the insurance increase rate renewal for Kaiser, it is at 5%, and that is at $162,000. However, both insurance carriers are offering us some benefit enhancements, and here are the enhancements. For one, let's start with Cigna. Cigna has offered a 0% increase in our dental insurance rates, and they've also offered going from a 50% coverage rate to an 80% coverage rate when it comes to endodontic procedures such as root canals, also in other dental procedures such as wisdom tooth surgeries and things of that nature and crown procedures. They're offering a 70% coverage rate from 50%. And as it pertains to Kaiser, Kaiser is offering a no deductible charge with their percentage rate increase as well. So in terms of vision, when it comes back to Cigna, we're actually having a 5% decrease in the numbers. So when we look at it in its totality, we're looking at $1,562 million of an increase. However, when we look at the 1,498 employees that are insured, that makes up 92% of our full-time employee base. So when we look at the 14 months of tumultuous times we've experienced with COVID, we're asking that the Board give consideration to incur the $1.5 million increase of the insurance rate. And we also have renewal contribution slides as well as an overview of the numbers that I've just discussed. And last but not least, I'd like to say with the 1,498 employees, 625 of them are residents in Henry County. Any questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner Thomas.
Did either one of the insurance carriers do any considerations for increases or decreases or increase in benefits for behavioral health or mental health, which is going to be very significant as we come out of COVID-19?
Well, as we previously mentioned, ma'am, Cigna is definitely, in a previous Board meeting, expanding and looking to do a deeper dive into the mental health piece. The "me" process that we spoke of several months back, those are also under consideration as well when it comes to the mental health component.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Madam Chair, my question is, do you support the recommendations that Mr. Cooper presented because they're critical to as we begin or get into what the proposal is?
Yes, I do.
So let's talk about a couple of scenarios, and Commissioner Thomas is anxious to get to her book, and so let's get to the book if you have it in front of you. And I'm going to start with Exhibit 1, and behind each exhibit, you have all of the departmental requests from both an operational perspective as well as a personnel request that are there. So let's start with Exhibit 1. One of the questions that was asked was what were the tabs, the public safety tabs? They were... I lost it. 15th, which is the sheriff, and then 30 through 35 for the rest of public safety, if you want to take a look at those. But I'm not going to talk about those right now. I'm going to go straight to Exhibit 1, where on Exhibit 1, you see the total requested amounts from all of the departments. And there you see the 202 million that I mentioned, or the 21.2 million worth of requests. Up at the top, you'll see the projected general fund revenue. And we've made a commitment, one of the commitments that we've made previously, was that we would balance our budget using our current revenues, projected revenue. And as you can see, that is not, that is not, nor will be, the case. But if you want to go or begin in the public safety tabs so that the chief can come back up, let's start at Tab 30. And I was trying not to go through in great detail length, but you see where we have documented everyone's requests by their line items, along with their personnel requests and capital requests we aren't talking about in this particular meeting. Would the Board like me to go through each of these? Or would they just prefer me talk about my summary?
Can you begin with the summary, and then if we have any additional questions, we could circle back around.
So beginning with the summary, and the reason why I started with the question of the 100% coverage by the county covering the increase in the insurance, that's one of our recommended, or it's in the proposed column. We're beginning with 190 million in revenue that we're projecting. That still shows us at 196 million in total expenses by all our departments, whereby we'd have to utilize $6 million in fund balance, which was one of the things, as well as with policy, that we were trying not to do except for one-time expenses and emergencies. And it's broken out on all of the major items, major items being of what Mr. Cooper just touched on, the fourth judgeship cost. We have to have a Board of Ethics beginning in January of 2022, and then all of the departments' requests, but not addressing all of their total amount because we believe some of those amounts can be covered in their baseline budget that we brought forward for the new Questions?
So on the public safety sector of it, does this include all of the personnel that the chief was referring to?
It doesn't include 100% of the chief's requests, nor does it include 100% of the sheriff's requests, no, ma'am. But it does include a majority of their requests. So in public safety, it was a total request of 11 million, and we're able to accommodate approximately 6.7 million of that amount. Using the Exhibit 1.
So what is the shortfall on that?
The shortfall in that will be about $6 million. If you're just talking public safety shortfall, we won't be able to cover approximately $5 million of their expenses. On Exhibit 2, on Exhibit 2 and on Exhibit 1, we're recommending, and this was also one of the desired requests of the Board, is that the millage rate remain unchanged at 12.733 mills. And on Exhibit 2, we're accommodating 100% of the insurance, but we're decreasing here on Exhibit 2 the amount for public safety where we would have to utilize approximately $1.7 million of fund balance, keeping projected revenue the same at 190 million.
And so is there a recommendation on the millage rate increase?
I do have a recommendation on a millage rate increase, and that is actually on Exhibit 3, as you flip. Because as the chief touched on, the needs of public safety in the growing community, in order to address those needs, staff is recommending a 1-mill increase to the millage rate, which would generate for us approximately $7.9 million, or close to $8 million, and we'd be able to cover the majority of the public safety increase. It's just a mill for public safety. And in that one, it would generate a positive fund balance, adding to the fund balance of $1.6 million. And it would raise the revenue projected amount to $1.197 million.
So this mill increase that you're stating is strictly for public safety and would not be used in general fund or for any other purposes?
It would be strictly for public safety and not any other purposes.
Okay. I saw that Commissioner Thomas had her hand, and then Commissioner Wilson had his hand up. We'll go with Commissioner Thomas and then Commissioner Wilson.
The mill rate increase that you're referring to, would that also include the sheriff's needs as well? Are you just speaking public safety on the chief that he is presenting to us? I know we kind of use the terms interchangeably, but I'd like to know, are we talking about both of them or one of them when it comes to fire safety, sheriff? What are we talking about this mill increase will cover?
I'm talking a mill increase for public safety. Public safety will include the sheriff, the Police Department, Fire Department, and everything under Chief Amerman, which includes the coroner, animal control, code enforcement. So that one mill would address all those needs.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wilson?
Currently, it looks like we're at 46% going toward public safety from the budget. Is that what I'm reading down on Exhibit 3? 46%?
That is correct.
So that would be, what, about five mills?
That's about how much they make up now. A mill for us right now equates to $7.9 million, and if the 11 million in requests would equate to about a mill and a half, actually.
Okay.
But the mill would cover, for public safety, the majority of all of public safety's needs.
So when we talk about a millage rate increase, of course, it's going to have to come from the tax commissioner and how it's going to affect everyone's taxes. I think we did a study, David, a couple of years back, and it was like $50 a year or something like that. Do you remember? It wasn't a whole lot. It wasn't a whole lot. It was for average home of $250,000.
So Commissioner Wilson, we've already pulled that information. I think David is going to gather it.
One of the things I do want to reemphasize to the Board is that this one mill that we're recommending, and I want to make sure the Board understands that we're not setting the millage rate today. That's typically done in August, but we felt that it was important to go ahead and have the millage conversation as we work through the budget with the understanding that the focus that I understood from the Board is definitely making sure that we can provide the resources that public safety needs. And so the reason we're recommending this one mill is solely for public safety, but with the understanding that this is something that you all will have to set in August as we set the millage rate. What David has handed me is it looks like on about a $300,000 home, you're talking about a $105 increase?
Yep.
And then for a $200,000 home, about a $65 increase.
Annually, not monthly.
Annually, yes, that is annually, not monthly.
And so when you take a value of a warehouse, a distribution center, of course, that number can be, I don't know what the values are, that would have to probably come from the tax effects. So that number is probably, do you have that number in front of you, Sherry?
I don't have that number, but we can definitely get that and report back to the Board on that.
Okay.
And I think what else is important about this, or at least Exhibit 3 recommendation, is that there would be no use of fund balance for this budget. And so I think that was one of the things that we wanted to continue pushing, that we're not having to utilize fund balance to set our budget, but also with the understanding is that we would be able to accomplish a little bit more as it pertains to the requests from all of our public safety groups.
Okay, thank you.
And I also think that to keep in mind that as we continue to grow and build and economic development comes to our county, we have to make sure that our businesses are protected. our citizens are protected. So public safety is vital. Making sure that we have everything in place for public safety to make sure that our community is safe.
And I want to make sure the board is clear that while this one mill would definitely enhance the recommendations from staff, it still would not give public safety everything that they've asked for. We've tried to go back and look at those priority issues in terms of safety, in terms of resources. And so I will tell you that we've spoken specifically with Chief Amerman. I know we've got to do a follow-up with the sheriff. I do believe that the deputy chief is on the call. So if you all have any specific questions regarding the sheriff's department or sheriff's office budget, Chief Deputy Pearson is on the video call with with the board if you all have specific questions pertaining to their budget request. And Chair Harrell, I see Commissioner Wilson's hand is up.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson?
Sheriff, I know we'll have this conversation probably June or July about the millage rate increase, but I think last year, year before last, we was talking about the frozen homestead was costing us about $9 million a year. And when we when we do a millage rate increase, the average homeowner, well, the homeowners have to understand that it's just a one-time increase and they'll go back though. Once that increase goes into effect for one mill, we'll go back to the frozen homestead. So they're actually getting a deal and a deal. You're getting an increase in public safety and you're still holding on to your frozen homestead as well. Either either we have to remove the frozen homestead or we have to increase the millage rate. And I don't think we can continue to operate the county and increase our public safety as it grows with a frozen homestead without going up on the millage rate. So they they have to, we have to educate them to the point of where I understand exactly where the dollars are going and they're going to fall back to the original frozen homestead with just that one-time increase. So when we say a hundred, let's say $100, once that $100 increase comes this first time around and it won't go up again, is that that's correct, right?
That is, that is correct.
So, okay, so I, we just need to educate. When we talk about a millage rate increase, we need to educate them about how that's going to affect them. It's just a one-time deal if we're going to continue with the frozen homestead.
Absolutely, and I also want to remind the board that in addition to just the general operation, general operating budget, we also have our SPOS five, which will be adding three additional fire stations and three additional police precincts. And so we have to start planning for the staffing for those those assets as well. So those are other things that we're trying to plan for so that when we open the fire station, we will have individuals that can work out of the fire station. And then when we add these additional police precincts or substations, we'll have the staff to do that as well.
Commissioner Wilson?
So in the last several years, I think in the last three years, we've added 43 new positions, police and fires, is that correct?
We actually added 50, I believe, last year. Is that correct, chief? Was it 50 last year?
Well, I'm not counting the, I'm not.
Let's approve for 50. Twenty? That's all for public safety? Okay.
But I wouldn't count, Sherri, I wouldn't count in the new fire stations that we hired for that. I'm just additional. So we had the 23 safer grant personnel in addition to what we to add to the current staffing. Then we added 20 additional place options. And then we add the staffing for 14, 15, and 16, but that's over the last three, four years. So total, that could be what, what is that number?
So you added 20 plus 23, that's 43. So you're looking at anywhere between 50 and 55 additional staff members within public safety for a county of about 240,000 residents and more than 500 or 600 new residential developments that are being approved monthly.
So the new fire stations that we got coming in the next couple of years, that staffing is going to look, what, 50 additional? Is that correct?
Yes, the chief is not at about 50. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, all right. That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
So are there any other, are there any other questions on the detail budgets that you have before you?
Are you talking about from public safety?
Public safety specifically or any of any of the departments that you may be interested in?
Chair Harrell?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Thomas.
I'm looking at line 14 on exhibit one, David. Culture Recreation, I'm not sure what that is, what that request is.
So Commissioner Thomas, that's going to be our Parks and Recreation group. That's just what they're they're heading is Culture and Recreation. And so they requested a $21,100 increase in their overall budget. And under that group includes our Parks and Rec Senior Services and Extension Services.
Well, that's what I thought and numbers seem awfully small for what we do in Parks and Recreation. And I wasn't sure what that was, just saying Culture Parks, I mean Culture Recreation. So I'm not really sure what they're trying to do with $21,000. The number seems really small.
So let me see if I can provide some clarification. And so this 21,000 is not their overall budget. This is just the amount above what their existing budget is. Keep in mind, a number of your Parks and Recreational activities can come out of impact fees and a number of the improvements that we're working on right now within our parks are already slated within our capital improvement plan. And so that's why that number appears to be very small. One of the things that the staff was charged with during the development of the budget was to try to remain within their budget based on that mid-year adjustment that we did earlier this year. And so what JP and his team did was go back and look at their budget, determine and identify what their needs were. And then based upon what their needs were, he determined that he could continue to operate under the current budget that was set in mid-year with about a $21,000 request for some additional needs within his unit. One of the things that our Parks and Rec crew is responsible for is the maintenance of all of our parks. And so as you know, we are not decreasing in park space. We're actually adding additional activities, pickleball courts. We're redoing our tennis courts. We have a number of activity fields from baseball to softball and so forth and so on that our staff has to maintain. And so that 21,100 is just an overall increase to the overall budget.
And Commissioner Thomas, under tab 11, specifically what JP's requesting is computer equipment that makes up about 15,000 of that 21. And then he's also requesting a civic plus annual maintenance fee under dues and fees.
I think one of the things that would help, thank you, David. Again, I understand that this is a request, that they are asking for their current budgets. I think what would help if I had that other column there saying here is the last year's budget, we're requesting this amount in addition to that. Instead of me going, I'm sitting here going back and forth. That's when I'm, I'm looking at the requests and I'm going to the tab, trying to follow along with the whole process. The other question I have, David, under Housing and Development, tab 16. What Housing and Development are we doing in the county? That we have to increase, increase that budget by $700,000?
So just for clarification, Commissioner Thomas, number 16 on your exhibit does not correlate with tab 16. That is just that line number. So that may be where we may have created some confusion there. So the Housing and Development would be your Planning and Zoning, your Community Development, your Building Department. And so that is a cluster of multiple departments. And so as you'll see, that overall cluster requested an increase of 701,510. So if you, and I guess what we can do to correct this is to put a number so that you'll know which tab to go to. So.
So 16 does not match 16.
No, ma'am.
And I am trying to follow along with you, I really am.
And I appreciate that.
And you have it listed as Housing and Development, but really you're talking more about Planning and Zoning and things of that nature. So see how we, you kind of got me turned here. I'm going, well, what kind of Housing and Development they're doing that they need an increase of $700,000?
So these are the headings that we we have to follow.
All right, so 16 goes for what number now?
So 16 does not correlate to any of the tabs in your book. It's just a point of reference so that when you need to refer to something, you can tell us to go to line 16. If you look under your, the book that you have, under the tab for appendix, that first page tells you what each tab correlates to. So tab 16 would be the Board of Commissioners budget. If you're looking for elections, that's going to be tab 13 and then so forth and so on. So that Housing and Development group, tab 36 is that Planning and Zoning and Building. Do you see, does that make sense now?
Yes, it does, but I'm trying to match up his summary that he's giving me because he's going through the summary, correct? So I'm trying to match up my summary with my appendix here so that I can watch his summary, match it with the breakdown that you've given me. I understand how to follow the tabs that you've given me. But somewhere along the line, we should have a correlation so I can follow through. But that's okay, let's keep going.
So we'll we'll clean it up and make sure. What we'll do is this one page, and what we really wanted you all to do was to focus on this one cheater so that you will know exactly the overall impact to the budget. And then if you had specific questions regarding, you know, why is this cluster asking for such an increase? Then you were to go to the tabs after you looked on the appendix to determine that. But we can clean it up and 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 definitely make it easier to read.
There's no tab for Housing and Development.
No, it's not. And so what I'll do is I'll, point taken, we'll we'll correct it.
Okay. Okay, keep going, I'm fine.
Okay.
We'll fix it some way, somehow.
So commissioners, you know, one of the objectives at the beginning of this meeting was to make certain you understood our process, the department requests, and then the assumptions that we utilize in developing the budget. You've heard from Public Safety, Chief Amerman, and you've also heard from Mr. Cooper, our Director of Human Resources. We've walked you through a few budget scenarios and we pointed you to exhibit number three, which is the recommended budget scenario, where we are recommending a one-mill increase for our fiscal year 22, 2022 budget. That's our recommendation there. But I want to know, in this particular budget that we're recommending to you, it strikes a critical balance that allows us to preserve the essential services and growth for the county residents. And it also ensures that we meet expenditures matching those to our projected revenue levels. I wanted to talk a bit about COVID-19. And I don't know if our departments realize this, but we're still in the, in a crisis and we still have expenses related to COVID-19. And there are no assurances that we're going to be receiving the revenue amounts that we're predicting. And I certainly don't know the impact that it's going to have on our accounting finances, our financial position, whether we're going to be able to do everything when the property taxes do come back in. And because it's expected to have a negative financial impact, all of that's unknown to me at this time. And that's why we're recommending exhibit number three with the one-mill rate, one-mill increase to the millage rate to help us address any adverse, potential adverse impacts on revenue loss. What questions do you have? Oh, I wanted to end with the next steps. And Mr. Glaze, I forgot to neglect it to put up the presentation on the screen for everyone. So we had a hearing workshop today. Our next future public hearings are scheduled for May 4th at 9:00 a.m. and May 18th at 6:30 p.m., where we'd like to have a public hearing and budget adoption on May 18th. Will there be any other questions?
David, did you say that you had a PowerPoint presentation?
I did, but it didn't come up. I'm shocked. You know what, look, I was impressed with it. And you know, I also like to include my numbers. So in it, there are basically three slides. One that included a, Mr. Glaze, I don't know if he can pull it up for you. But one of them was a slide that talked to no millage rate increase and no reduction in current services. It required fund balance usage, but we were still investing in the fourth judgeship and the Board of Ethics. We were still investing in the personnel actions that that we're asking for and maintaining employee benefits at affordable levels. And then the recommended slide talked to the one-mill increase to millage rate for public safety, still reducing no current services, no impact to fund balance. And that that was the one that was there. And I always like to end, right, even though the end, I always like to end, you guys know I like to present a slide of numbers where there's, so that you could see the trend. And that was, those were the slides that were not presented to you today.
Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
David, under the class and comp several years back, did we have an educational portion of that for, for the employees for the degrees and certifications increase?
Mr. Cooper's coming up to respond to that.
I see the longevity and the cola, but I don't see anything about the educational portion of that.
Commissioner Wilson, we're currently in phase two of the class and comp study. We're putting that together right now as we speak. And the certificate education component is a part of that phase two. Progressive promotions as well.
Okay. When would that, when would you finish that?
Where our projected date of finish is definitely for the end of, before the end of this fiscal year. But we're aggressively thinking in May.
Okay, so we won't see it in this budget?
Excuse me?
We won't see that in this budget?
We may see it mid-year, but I will consult with David in reference to it.
Commissioner, if you want to see it, we can certainly put it in and we'll see where we fall out. And the other, I wanted to mention, what is in there is the housing allowance for our police department officers. You know, we put in a stipend in there for them, for those that that live and reside in Henry County. So we're we're making steady increases as we go. What other questions?
I've got one more thing. So we only doing that for PD?
At this time, yes, sir. If you like, we can calculate it for everyone in public safety. So see what that impact would be.
See what the numbers look like anyway, yes, sir?
We'll calculate it for everyone in public safety that lives in Henry County.
And I'll just add, Commissioner Wilson, on the heels of COVID-19, and we are starting to see some improvement, we wanted to take incremental steps in terms of incorporating our new class and comp phase two piece. we wanted to take incremental steps in terms of incorporating our new class and comp Phase Two piece of it. So we wanted to be mindful of it, and that's why we're in consultation with our Financial Cluster Leader now.
Okay, thank you.
And I think what I want the board to remember is that this workshop meeting is for you all to tell us what you want to see in the budget. What we presented to you all this afternoon is what we believe is our first stab at what we've heard. We've heard from a number of you all that Public Safety is critical. Um, I will also mention that we did have a survey that was posted on our county website, and we didn't have a large number of people to participate in, so I've asked staff to post that again on all of our social media outlets. But the story is the same, the public wants to see monies going toward transportation, public safety, and recreational activities. And so what we've tried to do is to present to you all recommendations based upon what we believe to be the priorities of this board. But that's where you all are going to have to give us a little more guidance. One of the things I did hear from you all this afternoon, or at least I heard from Chair Harrell, and I'm not asking the board to vote, but I would like to know your thoughts on the insurance. Because right now, what we're recommending is that that one point five million dollar increase, the county take, would, would take that entire increase on and not pass anything on to the employees. And so that is one line item that we're going to check in the budget. One of the other things that David mentioned, um, in terms of our budget is that we still want to be able to offer the cola and the longevity for all of our employees. But also, right now, as a recruitment nightmare, we have a tenure vesting period, which means if you start working here in Henry County, it takes you ten years to become vested. This has been a problem across the board since it was implemented about four or five years ago. What we've asked is that we reduce that from ten years to five years. And so in the PowerPoint presentation, I'm going to figure out how we can get it up. It shows you the dollar amount on the impact that would have on the budget, which is a very small amount. One of the other things that we're looking at from a Public Safety standpoint, right now, our nine-one-one department and EMA employees are not under our Public Safety Plan. And we feel like they're a part of Public Safety and should be a part of that. And so while the nine-one-one piece, because it's an enterprise fund, will be able to take care of those employees who would then fall under the Public Safety Pension Plan, we would still have to pick up four employees under that EMA piece, or at least a portion of one employee under the EMA and nine-one-one, and then three full employees under EMA. So those are things that we need to get some definitive thoughts on, feedback on. If we're not headed in the right direction, if you all would like for us to focus more on, you know, eighty percent of the budget focused on Public Safety with the remaining on other items, then we need to know that. And then finally, please remember that this board approved about two years ago, um, the Fourth Judgeship. And so you will see that increase on the judicial side is strictly pertaining to us adding that Fourth Judge and then the staffing for the Fourth Judge. So I just wanted to rattle that information off for you all, but really, really, really would like to hear from you all where we need to be in terms of the budget. If there's no changes to it, we'll proceed accordingly. Um, and again, I think our recommendation is going to be that one mil increase. Although you all will not vote on it in May, we will build the budget under that assumption that this board will take action to increase the milage rate.
Commissioner Wilson?
Sure, I think I looked in the DOT budget and the increase was five hundred thousand, I think it's the last tab. No, I'm sorry. Looks like we have an increase of... Am I looking that right, four million dollars? What is that DOT increase?
So that is going to be tab number thirty-seven. And the increases for DOT is we have Phase Two of the Panola Mountain Greenway Project that we need to provide a match for. Bill Gardner Parkway match of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have a mowing contract at about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Pavement management at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then outsourcing engineering services. So that totals about one point two million under professional contracted services. We also have the Jonesboro Road lighting plan that was not initially budgeted, so that's under street lighting at a cost of about a hundred and thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. And then area lighting at about fifty thousand. We have improvements to guard rail costs at hun- at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then we also have under that our LMEG funding match and the Jonesboro Road construction match at one point, or three, one point three five million dollars. So yes, you're seeing about a three point four million dollar increase to the DOT budget, but a large number, or a large volume of that is contributed to match, match amounts that we're on the hook for.
Commissioner Thomas, did you have a question?
I did have a question. One is for the Board of Ethics that you've budgeted for. The Board of Commissioners have not set that what that budget will be, but I see you have the two hundred thousand. That's just a placeholder until that budget is set, is that correct?
So the way that, that our staff interpreted the Senate bill is that the budget could not exceed two hundred thousand dollars. And so we just set the max amount. Um, so that is something that this board, you all can certainly, um, provide a different number, but that was the number that was included in the Senate bill.
Additionally, I see where you've also given the different increases by departments. Do we not realize any savings from some of these departments, again, due to COVID-nineteen? Were there any savings that you were able to pass on, uh, in this budget?
So clarification needed there. In terms of increases amongst departments, tell me where you're looking so that I can go there.
I did not, I can't tell you anything general. I'm asking you, overall, when you look at county government and the impact that COVID-nineteen had upon us as a county government, were there any departments that saw significant savings? Their operations basically decreased due to COVID-nineteen instead of any type of increase that you could share with us?
So Commissioner Thomas, we did see a, um, significant savings in our travel and training because we did not have staff members that were traveling to conferences. Um, general office and operating expenses within the respective departments, we did see a decrease there. And so although COVID was alive and present, um, we didn't see a decrease from the personnel standpoint. Um, but in terms of just general operating, um, expenses, we did see a decrease there.
Additionally, I've also asked you to look at how we can start some type of increases for our Public Safeties due to educational levels. Is that in this budget or not?
That is not included in this budget, but that information has been provided to all the board members for feedback from you all. If you'll recall, I sent something to the board maybe two months ago regarding, um, the educational piece and specifically whether the board wanted us to look at, um, providing some expense for those that have obtained an associate's degree, bachelor's degree, master's degree, PhD, to what level. And so I can definitely bring that back, um, as a discussion item amongst the board and, and get some feedback from you all if you'd like to proceed. But that information is available and could easily be incorporated within the budget. What I would advise, though, Commissioners, is for every new item that we're adding to the budget, we've got to figure out where we're going to reduce another item. Because one of the things I want you all to, to hold me to is that we don't utilize fund balance. And we, we have about a million six to play with, um, in terms of adding, if we were to add that one mil. If the board elects not to add that one mil for Public Safety, then we will be going into the budget having to utilize fund balance for the additional expenses.
Okay, we definitely want to see, Sherri, what those numbers will look like because we are losing quite a few off, um, quite a few officers going to the counties because they have found some way to do some type of merit pay based upon education. And right now, what we're doing, whether you have a high school degree or a master's degree, everybody's starting just about the same, and that's simply not right. We cannot maintain the type of officers we want to maintain in Henry County by doing that. So if you put that in the numbers so we can see that, it would definitely be worthwhile.
Absolutely.
In addition to that, there are some adjustments I asked you to look at as well as far as, uh, school crossing guards, four hundred thousand dollar budget plus that we normally have there. Have you made that adjustment and made those dollars in another place? What have you done with that?
So I think Commissioner Thomas, you and I had a conversation, and I think you and I discussed not looking at school crossing guards this year. We discussed some other items that we were going to try to pursue and that you would kind of hold off on the school crossing guards. Is that something you want me to go back now and revisit?
We, yes, I will in this year. We were trying to find a way to put some dollars around other things. Yes, we have, we talked about a lot of things. And I wanted to shift that money over to Public Safety. If, if indeed we were not able to deliver in another area. Yes, we did have that discussion. And it appears we may not be able to deliver in that other area, so I do want to put that back on the table. Um, also, we were talking about whether or not we should keep SROs a part of our budget as well because we're looking at benefits. I know a lot of these things are reimbursed. School crossing guards are not reimbursed, but other ones are. But the benefits are not reimbursed to us as well, and the risk factor still remains with the county. That conversation needs to be had, and those numbers need to be put before us as well for consideration.
So as clarif- or not clarification, but just to confirm, we need to go back and revisit about the, revisit the school crossing guards. I think it's costing the county about a half a million dollars for school crossing guards. And then we need to have a conversation, obviously, with the Sheriff's Office on the school resource officers and the county's desire to no longer fund those positions. Although those are reimbursable, the county's desire to no longer fund those school resource officers.
Are not. But the benefits are not reimbursable. And we need to look at the cost that is costing the county to carry the benefit package for that, and what does it do to our insurance rates?
So I, I will clarify with our budget team, but I do believe that the school resource officers is fully reimbursable. Now, the training piece of it, um, that is carried by the county. The liability, if something were to happen from a, um, worker's comp or from a liability standpoint, that you are correct that that would be carried by the county. But in terms of the salary and benefits for the school resource officers, those are a hundred percent reimbursed by the Board of Education.
Okay, I really want you to look at those numbers. They have a much bigger budget than we do. In fact, I understand their budget, their fund balance was so lucrative this year, they had to get rid of some money and give out checks because they're only allowed to have so much money in their fund balance. So they gave out nice checks to people. And we should not be carrying expenses for the school board if they have enough money and more money in their fund balances to carry them. So I'm looking at that. And we need numbers on that so we can present it and say, this is what we can say when our insurance, our liability would go down, especially if you're dealing with children, that need to be presented to the board so we can consider it as well.
And, and just Commissioner Thomas, because I know that this meeting is being televised, I want to make sure that the public understands that you are not suggesting that we eliminate school resource officers within the schools. You're only requesting that the county no longer carry any liability for those school resource officers, correct?
We need to look at that money and the figures that it does cost the county. And if indeed that can be shifted to the school board, we definitely need to consider shifting that to the school board. And I am saying it in that fashion so that the whole Board of Commissioners can have numbers to look at to say, hey, by carrying this many officers, it's costing us additional amount in insurance. The liability risk exists. If we shift it over here, we won't have that liability. No, we have to carry that extra cost in, in insurance ourselves. That need to be seriously considered. We talked about it two or three different times, but we really do need to consider that and realize that our budget is maybe one-third of what their budget is. And they can afford it, where we need to take our money is to talk about the growth and development of the county.
So what I'll do, Commissioner Thomas, is ask our risk manager to provide to the board an update on any risk or claims that we've carried for school resource officers. Because I think that would be good in terms of the basis for determining the impact to our budget. And then I'll share that back with the board so that you all can make a sound decision on whether we do want to transfer this cost to the, um, Board of Education.
Thank you. And as you stated today, your goal is to find out what is it that we want, correct? So you can have those, put that information together. So that's my goal, is to give you an idea of some of the things that I want. Another thing I want to have done as well, and I hope, um, the other Commissioners can hear, that we have to consider our legal department. We now have one attorney that represents the Board of Commissioners. A lot of, um, Board of Commissioners have hired an internal attorney that is a attorney hired by, it's not contracted, but is an employee of the county. That need to be considered whether or not we want to move to having our own attorney employed by the county specifically for the county and run numbers on that. Uh, that need to be coordinated against what is our legal bill averaging per year? Not the contract amount for the attorney, but the entire legal bill. Every invoice that has been sent in, every document that has been sent and paid beyond the contract of the attorney. Because if we are paying the contract base plus separately for other functions, that's our legal bill. And I don't see where you have a separate tab in here to know what that bill was before and what it is as we go forth.
I have that information, I will forward it to the board in terms of our general service that we pay for, and then any additional fees outside of that that's not covered under that general service contract. So I'll get that to you, Commissioner, I'll get it to the entire board. And Commissioner Thomas?
So we need to consider whether or not we need another attorney on board or if we need to have our own internal attorney and move from a contract situation.
Okay, and then Commissioner Thomas, I missed one part. You indicated that there were Commissioners that had their own attorneys, or did I misunderstand that part?
No, no, I'm saying the Board of Commissioners have hired their own internal attorney, not by contract, but that attorney ended up being an employee of the county. That's an option.
Okay.
I'm simply saying, we need to determine how we need to move as the county is growing. Do we need two attorneys? Do we need our own internal attorney? Do we need to move from contract services? Because at this point in time, I think we have base contract services plus invoicing for other services. We need to determine what's more advantageous for the county, is what I presented before you as well.
Okay.
Uh, this need to be done with the coroner. A lot of them have changed the way that we, they have done their coroner services as well, and that needs to be addressed. We have the same process for our coroner service as we have for years. A lot of county have changed the way they do their coroner services. So we need those options looked at with this budget going forward.
So Commissioner Thomas, the coroner services in terms of what we currently have is that our coroner is paid a set salary. Um, I'm not sure if you were on the board when this changed. I think it may have been three years ago that the coroner was previously paid per case. And so he did come before the board and request to have a set salary. Are you wanting us to look at something beyond that or look at expanding the number of coroners or at least adding to his existing staff? Um, because in the budget, he did ask for a full-time deputy coroner. Right now, he has two positions available for part-time coroners, but he would like to upgrade one, or at least upgrade the deputy coroner to a full-time coroner in order to be able to provide benefits to that individual.
Sherri, I'd be interested to know what that use was of the coroner before COVID? What the usage was before COVID? I'm quite sure there's an increase now because of COVID-nineteen, uh, which we should not totally look at because things will go back to normal one day, I hope. But we do need to look at that. And also, we need to determine if we need to go back by case or we should stay, I don't know, while we have, we're paying a regular salary and his employees as well. That doesn't make sense to me. I mean, it does not to me, but I was not on the board. Why would we be paying for the staffing of the coroner? This doesn't make sense to me, but that's something we need to look at.
Got it. So I have coroner services that we're going to go back and provide some additional information. You want a recommendation from staff regarding either the need to have a second attorney to either go from a contracted services or to an in-house service. And then you want the total amount that has been paid in legal, um, fees to our current, um, attorney. Did I get everything?
By year.
Okay.
By year.
By year. But the last, how many years, Commissioner Thomas?
Oh, three years will be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sherri also, and, and looking at Sherri also, and looking at the legal fees, also, I have asked for it by department. And so I want to know what our legal fees are by department as well.
Absolutely, I will get that sent over to the board this afternoon because I do have that information available.
Oh, and then going with, uh, Commissioner Wilson, I'm going to get to you, one second. With regards to the, uh, school crossing guards and the SROs? With regards to the school crossing guards and SROs, do we know if the sheriff's office has had a conversation with our Board of Ed with regards to them starting their own department? So that all of these services that currently fall up under us, that the, the school board can take this on? Has there been any conversations with regards to that with the Board of Ed?
So Chair Harrell, I am not aware of any conversations between Henry County management team. Deputy Chief Pearson is on the call. I hate to put him on the spot, but I don't know if our team can unmeet him and maybe he can provide some additional information regarding that inquiry.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Districted Board. We have not had a conversation with the school board as it relates to them starting their own police department. As a matter of fact, we are in the process of rewriting the MOU between the sheriff's office and the Board of Education. Does that answer your?
That answers my question, but this impacts your budget. And so I guess what we're trying to determine, this is one of the things that Commissioner Thomas brought up, is that even though these expenses are reimbursable, it's still, it's, it's still a liability for us. And so what we're trying to determine is you have school boards, you know, across the state that have their own departments. And so would this be in the best interest for us and the school board to look at starting their own resource, police department within their schools?
I, I would answer that this way. I, I think that that's a, a, a matter for, again, the school, the school board and the, and the county to, to make a determination. Nevertheless, I know that the sheriff office would, would want to retain, you know, those deputies in the sheriff's office if the decision was made for the school board to start their own police department.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So Sherri, one, one of the questions you asked was about with regards to, can you go over the list for me again? I can tell you that I am in support of, of the county picking up the 100% for the health insurance for our county employees. So that is one thing that I do support is that. I also support the one meal rate if it is going to be put aside specifically for public safety and nothing else.
Okay. We also had a question regarding the vesting period from 10 years to five years. And I don't know if my, okay, thank you. I was going to say, can the tech services group put back up the slide which had the recommendations on it? And if you put it up, I can kind of tell you how to flip through it. So Chair Harrell and board members, look at your, look at Exhibit Three in your book, and you'll see the, the information that, that myself and David is, that David and myself referenced. So on line number six, that is the 2% COLA and 1% longevity for all employees that we provide every year. And so that would be at a cost of about $3.2 million. And so I would like to make sure that the board is still supportive of that. We also have to fund our pension. One of the things that I'm really committed to is making sure that we are funding our pension at the required amount. And so we're looking at about a 15.4% pension increase. We were currently at 14.1, now we're at 15.4. That's going to be line number eight. That's about a million dollars. And then the pension change for vesting from 10 years to five years is going to cost the county $218,000. And then I also mentioned the E911 reclassification to public safety. That's going to cost the county $57,900. And those are all under lines seven through 10.
Seven through 10.
Yes, ma'am, and that's going to be on Exhibit Three, which is the recommended sheet.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, if you had a question?
I got a couple of questions, yes, ma'am, thank you. Sherri, longevity. Several years back, we, we had a longevity with the, every other year. And what you have here, this is every year, correct?
That's correct. If you'll remember, Commissioner Wilson, the board approved the class and compensation plan, which was the up and over plan, which included a 1% increase every year.
Okay. And I have one more, I got one more comment, Sherri. I was looking at the Board of Commissioners' budget, and currently we're at $956,000, $956,000. Got an increase going to $982,000. I think we, as a board, need to look at our own budget to see where we can cut something out of our budget to help fund some of these other needs of the county. And I say that every year, and I hadn't had any luck with it yet. And I will keep saying that as long as I'm on the board. That's all I have.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
So if, if I may, Chair Harrell, one of the things, and I think Commissioner Wilson, just point of information, the reason the Board of Commissioners' budget has increased is because ACCG provided increases for all of the commissioners. And so we have to budget for that. So that may be where that increase is coming in. I'm clear on what you're saying, but I just wanted you all to be aware that I think that's what's driving that increased cost.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Harrell, please.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Sherri, if you could help us with this, I remember the last budget hearings, when the different judges start making their presentation, there was so much confusion as to what a judge makes. Percentages come from this budget, percentages come from the state, percentages go over here, and judges saying that they were making less than attorneys and some are leaving the county, going to other counties because of what we pay them was so much less. And, you know, there were statements made about clerks making more than actual judges do. And there was some mix-up about that whole process. And I remember you saying that we need to look at how the structure is. Some is different for an administrative, from magistrate court to superior court. And it was very uncomfortable to hear a judge say, I make less than the county clerks do. And we go over to the judge. Could you help us with that? And you said, Commissioner, there are other pots of money that judges are paid from that may not be reflected here in this budget. Can you help us with that? So we, when we get to that presentation, we're ready for it. Last time, we were not. There was a contrast between Clay County Judge, a system of how they pay their judges, and Rockdale and how they're paying their judges. We were giving examples of ones who've left Henry County and went to Clay County. It was very uncomfortable again. But can you prepare us for that and help us know what we're doing with that whole segment there? So we'll be prepared for what they may be requesting on this budget.
Absolutely. I will, I don't want to muddy it this afternoon, but I will provide to you all the spreadsheet which shows how the, the judges are paid, how their supplements are, what, how the supplements are billed and how the salaries are developed. You are correct, it is a little muddy. I think that we have cleaned it up. You will notice, though, in the budget that there are, I believe, under the Superior Court judges, there is an increase for some supplements for some of their staff to get them in line with the other staff members in other courts. But absolutely, I will provide to you all, hopefully I can do it on one sheet, how the, how their supplements are calculated.
Thank you, because I remember that took so much time. And I really don't think we can't see any conclusions as to what to do to fix it. But if you would send us some recommendations ahead of time, when they start making their presentation, we'll be better prepared to make some good decisions.
So one of the things I want to make sure the board is aware of this year, we spent last year, I think it was a day and a half or maybe two days, or maybe it was all day, I, I can't remember, allowing each department to present to the board. And so this, this year, we decided to allow the cluster leaders to be present to provide any input that you all may have regarding the budget because it takes a lot of time to go through every element of the budget. What I would request is that you all now have your budget books and you have every department. If there are departments in which you have specific questions, if you let me and David know, then we can schedule an opportunity for you all to do some FaceTime with those departments. What we really wanted to do was to provide you all with recommendations based again upon the priorities that you all have identified. And I'm hopeful that this afternoon, we've captured that, being public safety. Obviously, transportation is critical. We didn't talk a lot about that, but there's multiple pots of money for transportation. I think Commissioner Wilson mentioned the increase in DOT. And so you'll see that we're definitely putting monies towards those projects that we already have out there and a match is required. But also, I want to remind this board that we are working on a T-Splot. And so a number of your road projects, if approved by the voters, will be captured under that. I know this week, we do have some one-on-one meetings with the commissioners to discuss specifically projects within your respective districts. And then we do have a meeting scheduled with the four cities to discuss T-Splot and that project list, I believe, on April 15th. And so we'll have more conversation as it pertains to that. But this has definitely been helpful in terms of where we need to put forth our efforts as we work to bring back a final recommendation to this board. Right now, we do not have another workshop meeting scheduled for the board. So if it is the will of the board for us to reconvene or to set aside some time before we bring this to the board for the first hearing and then the final adoption, please let me know that so we can figure out how to incorporate another meeting into y'all's meeting schedule. And if need be, we can schedule something. I know we have a couple of board meetings that are coming up. If we need to do something on a morning, if we already have a board meeting in the evening, we can definitely do that. But I do want to go ahead and give the staff some guidance in terms of where we're headed. I believe, and I hate to keep repeating it, but I do believe that I am seeing, at least from the board, that the focus is going to be on Exhibit Three, which would include that one meal increase for public safety purposes only. And if I've misunderstood, please correct me, and we'll go back to either Exhibit One or Two.
Commissioner Tom.
Chair Harrell, we've made quite a few suggestions today. If we don't have a follow-up meeting, when are we to see these numbers to see how the suggestions will impact the proposed budget? So I'm assuming there's going to be some type of follow-up session if today is today to give you suggestions about what we want to see in this budget or changed in this budget or added to the budget. So my, my request would be a follow-up meeting in some form or fashion.
Okay. Chair Harrell, would you like for staff to work with Michelle on getting that meeting scheduled and then give you some dates so that you can call the meeting?
Yes, that'll be fine. Commissioner Wilson, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Uh, no, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay. So Sherri, what I do want to say with regards to Exhibit Three that you have provided with us with regards to the FY 22, 1% longevity, the insurance costs, pension, all the way from, I guess, line item six through 10, I do support those, that particular, those particular line items with regards to Exhibit Three.
Very good. Thank you, Chair Harrell. Any other, other comments, concerns, questions from Commissioner Thomas and/or Commissioner Wilson?
Oh, happy.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, anything else from you?
Thank you. You guys have done a great job. I just appreciate having a book to look at. And I do want to see some of these changes that we've made, our requests reflected in the numbers so we can make sure we put in forth the best budget for the county. That's the whole goal. Oh, yes, I do remember Sherri, you, I think I heard you say, and Patrick say, the $2 million per district for quality improvement in sidewalks would be somewhere in the budget so we would not have to bring back the resolution that Commissioner Wilson had suggested. Has that been placed in this budget as well?
It has not. It was initially on a previous agenda, and I believe we ended up pulling it off of the agenda. So we wanted to go ahead and get those funds to the board so that you all could go ahead and start spending it now because what I understood is that y'all had some immediate sidewalk and infrastructure needs. And so what I'd like to do is at least bring that back to the board. We've already had red folder for April 6th, but if I could get it on the next agenda, then we can bring a resolution and then go ahead and start spending those funds.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, Sherri, with regards to those funds, do we have, uh, uh, projects that are listed and a cost that it, it will cost to, for those particular projects?
So Chair Harrell, this $2 million would be divvied up amongst all of the districts. I believe the initial resolution was a follow-up to the $2 million that was previously allocated to District Five Commissioner. I think there was some conversation amongst commissioners that you all wanted to go ahead and allocate an additional two for every district since $2 million had already been allocated to District Five. So at this point, there is not a project list. We were going to leave it to the commissioners to identify some of those much-needed infrastructure projects, and then we would proceed accordingly.
Okay, then, so it was actually $3 million that was allotted to District Five. So is District Five getting an additional $2 million?
No, ma'am.
Or is this just going to the districts that did not get any funding at all?
It is only going to the districts that did not receive funding. There will be no additional funds for District Five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And one of the things that Alex has reminded me is that the pavement management program that we have currently going on, that will identify some of those areas in which we need to put some additional funds towards. So there will be a system in place in terms of identifying some of those most critical roadways. And then I saw Commissioner Wilson's hand up, Chair Harrell.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
So we, if we move forward with the $2 million for each district, so next year, maybe we can have another million dollars for the four districts. It didn't equal out to three. So maybe we could try to, maybe we can try to put that in the budget as well.
So Commissioner Wilson, whatever you all put into motion, we will definitely bring a resolution for the board to consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, did David have anything that he needed to wrap up with us? Are, are we, are we good?
I'll let Mr. Smith close us out.
Wanted to thank you for your time today, and no, I had no, nothing more to add.
Okay. I'd like to thank everyone. I thank all of the staff for all of the hard work that you all have done with regards to putting this budget together. This is a great start for us. We still have a lot of other things to figure out. I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for being on board, the sheriff's office, and everyone for joining, joining us today. And I, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.